Can I get some water?
Sure.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We start each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so who's joining me? Face and mind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start by having public comment by persons, and actually, I would like to do the report of the Mayor and City Commissioners, so let's start at this end of the table with Commissioner Walters.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
I just want to say that I think the Rose McKee Triathlon went very well, and I was volunteering directing traffic at Paul and Woodcliff, which I do now almost every year at that same intersection, but we had a really good turnout, the weather was beautiful, and a lot of great participation, so thanks.
Commissioner Zankel?
Sure, Gaslight Village is continuing to do well, we've got another ribbon cutting coming out of Coldwell Banker, made some more significant investment into Gaslight Village there, so scheduled for Thursday at 4:00 PM, this is when we've been kind of juggling with completion of the works, so I think this is actually officially going to happen here on Thursday, we tried to schedule this a couple times. Along that way in mind, too, the Gaslight Village Business Association did have a general member meeting recently, we had great participation and partnership, we had representatives from our Public Safety Department and our Public Works Department, and Doug, we were there, appreciate that, and there's a lot being talked about as well as continuing to expand kind of events for the area, continue to collaborate with the school system as well there, so good stuff on the works, if people want to be involved from a Halloween perspective, there's some discussions happening there, but also continuing to look at some things in the springtime as well, so go gaslight.com is the website, and there's contact information there if you want to be involved.
Thank you. Mr. Vallee?
Nothing today.
Doug LeFave, may I call on you and see if you have any comments? Sorry, script is over.
Sure, yeah, sure, just one important item of note, the city did receive a site plan revision from Spectrum Orthology Hospital last Thursday, so staff and consultants are reviewing this middle, and depending on the completeness of the application and due that we have to take place before it gets to planning commission, we're probably looking at either in October or November introduction at planning, so that's something that people should be paying attention to, all the materials will be on our website, and we certainly will be sending out notifications to the adjacent neighbors as well.
And just to clarify, Doug, you'd anticipate that there would be multiple meetings on this at planning before it got to city question?
I had expected these two at planning before.
Good to know.
That's good to know, thank you, so if it starts in October or November for planning?
Potentially starting in October or November.
Or November, so we could be talking six or more weeks at work if the commission sees it. Okay, all right, thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is public comment by persons in attendance, so if there's anything that someone would like to speak about that is not on the agenda, you may come forward at this time. Same.
Good evening, Thomas Straszkas, 435 Plymouth Avenue Southeast, so I was aware already ahead of time that those plans were coming in relative to the parking structure and the revised plans from Spectrum, I just want to make it clear to this audience that the original approved plan was a single-site plan, two structures, a north lot and a south lot, there is current litigation going on under that, as many in the city know, the attorneys advised the city council as well as the Spectrum Council, and it's went numerous rounds already in the court system, and it is in the Michigan Appeals Court currently. So they moved forward, they were advised that they started construction on that north lot at risk, and they are still at risk, and with that said, the south lot that was approved, it was all one-site plan, being that it's in litigation relative to about eighteen items, eighteen bullet point items that are in question, I have questions, or I wonder how the city can even entertain looking at anything relative to changing something that was already approved and that's in current litigation.
Well, before I speak to that, I'd like to ask Mr. LeFave if he wants to make any comments?
Well, we don't generally comment on any sort of pending litigation that's out there and noted in the process that will be started.
Thank you.
So, again, it is under litigation, and theoretically shouldn't even be able to be touched at this time until that's either resolved or...
Yeah, it's, as I understand it, Mr. Straszkas, it's not in our purview at this time, or may not be at all, so we can't really comment on that?
It's not what?
It's not in our purview right now, it's not in front of us, and so we can't comment.
But I'm just making this since you brought it up tonight, that you've received plans, I'm just making this audience aware, so that it's on public record.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so I'll close the public comment unless there's anything else that people would like to come up and speak about, seeing no one, let's move on to the regular agenda items, and the first agenda item is the Kent District Library 2018 Annual Report Presentation, and Board Representative Chuck Myers is going to introduce that for us this evening.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for giving us a little bit of time, so you can give an update on things that have been happening with Kent District Library, I represent three geographic areas, Cascade, East Grand Rapids, and the new Ada Branch that's being built as we speak. Actually, I represented Lowell for about sixteen years, I think, in the same position. Four years ago, I moved here, and now I live in East Grand Rapids, and I represent you on the Board of Trustees. I'd like to take a moment to thank each and every one of you for your support, for your support from the standpoint of our Board of Trustees, our senior management group, all of our employees, and thank you in particular for the people that use ALI, it's a terrific service that's certainly well-used. I wanted to, we have three speakers, we're going to be bright, brief, and be gone, I promise you, sounds like a lot, but I wanted to let you know that KDL is going under a little bit of a different look, I have a different-looking name badge, and when I say what's in your wallet, I have my KDL card, which is a new KDL card, this is a new design, but it's interesting that this card you carry in your wallet, unlike a Master Card or credit card, you don't create any debt with it, you create assets with it, and I've used this card to ride a bicycle from out here, I've used this card for a ukulele lesson, I've used the card for, I attended a session on making beer, brewer, brewery type stuff, we have the same thing for wine, to learn about wines and teas and coffee, the most, as you can see in the windows over there, very recent thing we're doing now is you can come in and use this card to take home a vinyl record, and a record player to play that, aha! And one of my favorite programs, I have to mention, that always excites me, is called Ruff Readers, R-U-F-F, now Ruff, the name I think came from, Dennis the Menace's dog, whose name was Ruff, if you recall, maybe? But the Ruff Reader Program is a program to encourage young readers to gain confidence by reading to service dogs, so we bring in service dogs, they read to the dogs, the dogs look at them very interestingly, and they gain confidence in their ability to read without criticism. So, and of course, the other thing you can do with this card is check out books and materials. I would like to eliminate, like I said, eliminate my time, I'm going to introduce Carrie Wilson, who's our Director of Library Services, again, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, so I'm Carrie Wilson, I'm the Director of Library Services at KDL and a member of our leadership team, so thanks for having me here tonight, 2018 was an outstanding year for KDL, and we really, really focused on delivering more personal value than any other year, I hope, up to this point, so a few highlights that are my favorites that I'll share include, one, we began offering full-time, or I'm sorry, healthcare benefits to our part-time staff, so previously that was only for full-time, so that's really been fun to watch this impact the culture of our staff that are serving our patrons. Another of the favorites would probably be, we introduced our Kelloggsville branch, so we put a KDL branch inside of the KDL, or Kelloggsville High School, so we partnered with that community, and it's been great to reach those underserved and at-risk youth students in that community, but we're pretty well-loved throughout Kent County, I don't mind bragging on that point, and you can see from our impact report that the utilization of our services at large has continued to increase, so we had an increase of 36,000 program attendees in 2018 from 2017, and then our summer reading completers actually increased by 17%, which is huge, these are the programs that we try to prevent that summer reading slide for our students, but it's also for adults, so to see these numbers continue to rise proves that we're able to reach our communities and make a big impact. But the real magic really happens with our branch staff, who work so hard to deliver these services, so I will let our branch manager here finish the deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I was thinking about this, I've done a few of these, a lot of these, and so I think what I want to say, and I kept coming back to the community center, and I know I've probably said this over the years, but we would not be able to do the things we do, I think, if we were not part of this community center, I mean, that is a huge piece, and it's tables, it's chairs, it's the lights, it's the cleaning, all of that stuff, then we can offer a great place space for little kids, we can offer a place for middle schoolers to come after school, we can offer a great space for someone to come in and we're collaborating with other people to make a conference call where it doesn't annoy everyone else, we can have tutors for adults to children, people with English as a second language, we can have someone just run in the door, pick up their hold and leave, and just eyeball us on the way through it, that's okay, too, but all of this stuff happens because we are part of this community center, it happens so well being part of the community center, so that is what was running through my head, and what I really wanted to point out is, without that partnership and without that collaboration, we wouldn't be able to do as many wonderful things as we do, so I thank you for your continued support from the city, from all the departments, I mean, we work together so well, and I do also want to mention the friends of the library who continually offer support in so many ways, we just wouldn't be able to do as many great things as we do without them. I'm done.
Thanks.
I mean, I should have done ever.
Thank you, Don, thank you, well, we have such a great library here, and I know we all take a lot of pride in it, and many of us have kids who take advantage of the incredible resources that we have, from summer reading to the bicycles, as you mentioned, the Ruff Readers, we've done a lot of that, so thank you for being here, and for, it's just, it's so nice to get only good news from you.
Any questions, Michael?
Well, I guess I'd like to take this moment, you know, Don talks about collaboration, and it's pretty unique, what we've got, pretty special, what we have here in East Grand Rapids, I think, from many different levels, but I think I always have to take a minute to truly compliment Don and her execution, you know, she participates with the Business Association, she participates with the school, she helps, that collaboration certainly is nice to have from a physical space standpoint, but really, you know, the glue that binds here is your staff, and Don has been a leader in our community, and we're very thankful for that, and my only concern is that I brag about her so much, she's going to get promoted and be out of here someday, so...
I don't want Carrie's dog.
So, but I just think, you know, my time, you know, not just as Commissioner, but also as working different, wearing different hats, I just, even as new ideas came up at the Business Association just recently, you know, Don was all about trying to find a way to make things happen, and to find the best way to make it happen so that kids are experiencing the best possible outcomes, and then, you know, ultimately, the selfish standpoint, I recently had some new certifications, so I got to use those free rooms and study, and the entire staff there was just so supportive and even, you know, procreated by continuing education exams as well, so I just, I think it's such a gem, it's such an important part of our community overall, and that collaboration, once again, I just, I don't want to, it's not just the physical facility, but it's how we use it, and it's really the relationships that are really built between the schools and the city itself, as well as the business owners that are here, too, and I just want to thank you, Don, for, once again, for really being the part that really makes that happen, so thank you.
Well said.
Well said, and Don, also, you hired these rock star young people to work with our young people, who, you know, they're so cool and fun, so I don't know where you find all these great people, but keep doing it, because it inspires our kids to read more, so, all right, thank you, so the next item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the introduction of an ordinance to amend, now let's back up, the next item on the agenda is a zoning variance hearing on the request of Tanya Vanne Bosch of 947 Lakeside to allow detached garage, and we invite Alec Mizikar to introduce that for us this evening.
Close, Commissioner? So the applicant, Tanya Vanne Bosch, is 947 Lakeside Drive, is requesting a zoning variance to allow her remodel of the built detached garage to be just under the three-foot setback requirements, the remodeling of the garage is part of a larger overall project on her property, so it's a previous zoning variance, those grants, if it was property last year for a covered front porch, which kind of prompted our amendment of the zoning ordinance to allow those types of things. The garage was not intended to be completely removed, rather just remodeled and extended along the west and south walls, it was originally about eighteen by eighteen feet, and they remodeled it to be twenty by twenty, most new garage remodels are between twenty by twenty or twenty-four by twenty-four, so this is kind of like on the smaller end of garage remodels. So the garage had to be taken down due to unforeseen structural problems, which ensured the applicant could basically expand upon more, and she wrote in her narrative, so they had to be taken down, and that is the reason for asking for the variance tonight. There's a roof overhang of two feet, which is continuation of what existed before, the zoning ordinance states that roof overhangs are only allowed at one-foot encroachment, so it was determined, after notices were already sent out, unfortunately, that a second zoning variance would be required for that, so when talking to the applicant, they prefer to continue with tonight and hear this zoning variance, and then have the second one be heard at the next meeting, so any notice can be sent out. Looking at the lot and surrounding area, this street, particularly Lakeside, does a lot of non-conforming lots compared to the surrounding R2 neighborhood, due to their size, most being fifty feet wide instead of the required seventy-two feet, this can cause difficulties in positioning detached garages, on, just a quick search on Google Images, you can see that most of the garages in that area or in that street are all, look to be non-conforming. Looking at past history of these types of requests, the Commission in the past has been generally accepting of approving variances to allow replacement of old detached structures to be in the same, generally the same location, the applicant states in their narrative that the neighbors to the south have no presence of the zoning variance, and we not rate anything on to any of the neighbors, so I'm hearing any questions from the Commissioner?
For clarification here, the, we previously had seen this property, correct, and that you were referring to is just the front porch is what we had...
Correct.
...variance on, so we didn't have any conversation about the garage in the past, because it was feared it was just more of a, you know, yeah, so now, due to, I guess, some unforeseen circumstances, the placement of the garage and being too close to the property line is what we're specifically dealing with today?
Yes, it's had it be completely torn down.
Okay, and then the, I heard you say, the roof overhang is, would be a whole separate issue that would have to be heard at a later date, after appropriate notices?
Correct, because then a notice tomorrow and have the public hearing be at the next of the commission meeting.
Okay, so if we decide to approve today, we would expect to see that at that point, that we don't need to do that if...
Correct, yeah, they wish to continue with today, just so they could know, sooner or later, that they have to, and they need to.
All right, perfect, I think I'll save the rest of my questions for the applicant.
I have a quick question, so the neighbor that is referred, the neighbor that's fine with allowing this variance, is that the closest neighbor to...
The one to the south.
The south, okay, so the one that would be most affected by it, okay.
Yeah, it's because it meets the three foot on the west side of the lot.
Maybe two point seven for both.
Is two point seven for both?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so both towards the southern property line as well as the western property line, okay, thank you.
Alec, it looks like from the site plan now, there's a three-foot separation almost in the, kind of in the center of that side of the garage, it says three feet.
I think that's just calling out what the requirement is.
That's just pointing out what the requirement is, and then the other is the, what they're asking for, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good question. It just looks like it's three feet in the center, like it changes, the setback changes on that drive?
Oh, yeah, I think, this is bold, I think it's what they're calling out, is what the requirement is.
Could you maybe put the site plan up on the...
Sure, sorry, I stayed with the others, so...
Because there was, yes, thank you, I think Commissioner Hammer was kind of pointing out this, oops, I just blocked it out.
It's a little hard to tell that it was...
That one right there, there we go.
Yeah. Now we know where it is, Jan.
Yeah, you got, you know, but then the other side over here, that was the three foot, I was guessing, I was taking a look at it before, but what I hear you saying is, once again, that was just kind of a call out of the requirement, of the required variance on both, both sides, correct, so, thank you for the clarification, I'll stop, Hammer.
And where it was, was the two, two point seven feet?
Yes, it's placed in the exact same spot.
Okay.
Except for expanding out to be twenty foot by twenty foot.
Are there any other questions for Alec?
What's the point two referring to, under the three?
That's for a fence that's right there.
Okay.
But the previous foundation was, was basically the exact same spot as where the new one is being proposed, or is being built, I know, yeah, they kind of ran into this one, they got into it, so, so it hasn't moved any closer to either the southern or the western property line?
Nope, I believe they just strengthened the foundation, I'm sure the applicant could...
Yep, okay, thank you.
All right, if there are any other questions, thank you, Alec, very much.
Sorry, one last question, it doesn't meet any, any problems with lot carbonation or anything like that, correct?
Nope, they're just, actually, they just replaced the driveway with a more permeable surface, too, to...
Thank you.
Sure, all right, thank you, Alec, so the next step is to invite the applicant to speak, so is there, is Tanya Vanne Bosch, or someone from... Oh, I'm sorry, we're closing, we're opening the public hearing, please come forward, we invite the applicant to speak next.
Yeah, I'm public speaking, so bear with me a little bit, getting me, thank you for having me, I guess I would just like to state that I certainly would love to wrap the project up, I realize we've had some delays, and I know I've got some neighbors here supporting me as well, and they've been very, very patient, and I would just ask that you would consider the impact on my neighbors, if we were to move this garage into finished product, what would that mean for their properties and their lawn and new fencing, and we're just anxious to have, you know, yard and everything done, just for the aesthetics of the neighborhood, and when it rains, you know, we've got our gutters back on, and keeping everybody happy, and just maintaining the work that you could, so I just ask that you consider our neighbors as well, so thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Sorry, I know you wanted us to think of others, so, one second, have you heard anything from your rear neighbor on Orchard?
We have not, we had an initial, Erin, met with her briefly, I actually met with her briefly, we have tried to meet with her today and reached out again, and we have not heard anything else.
Well, I appreciate you trying to do that.
Yeah, I, you know, I'd like to meet her needs as well and get some gutters on, but I understand with the overhang sound, we still have to delay that process, so, yeah.
Are there any other questions for you? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, closing, I guess, would anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
Good evening, my name's Darren, I'm with Home Specialists, the builder, working with Tanya on her project, the reason we ended up tearing down the old garage was, as we went to expand the foundation, we found a root system, tore that out, and it crumbled the whole thing, and the whole thing more or less collapsed on itself, so at that point, we had no choice but to rebuild it and to redo the entire foundation, and that's what kind of caused the whole rebuilding process of it, so...
Can you speak at all to the practical difficulties that would be associated with actually meeting the three foot, you know, moving it?
So, so we kind of settled on, and Tanya had spent a lot of time on designing, and she kind of designed her whole layout, backyard layout, and everything was based on, with that garage size being a certain distance from the house, and being able to make the corners and get parking in it, and then still being able to maintain any type of backyard feature set, we couldn't go much more than twenty feet in width, and then if we had to move it off that, off the lot lines, it was just going to start encroaching more and more, and then there was just going to be less room, and it wasn't going to be very feasible to get everything she wanted for the project.
So, may I ask you a question about the original foundation walls?
Yeah.
That deteriorate, or that, there was a tree root system that...
Underneath the concrete, so when we went to excavate before expanding the concrete for the garage floor, we found that, and we had to tear that out in order to expand the concrete, and then that caused the whole, the foundation to just collapse.
So, the original plan, though, you were just going to, the intent was to leave that the way it was?
To leave it there, we were just going to expand two feet by two feet, and just kind of pour it and then extend the walls out, so it's the original intent was.
Are there any other questions? Close the public comment session, and bring it up here, and ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve the variance request as described in the agenda item number five.
Second.
I'd be happy to start, I think that this variance does meet the standards for approval, I rely in part on our long history of how we've handled these types of garage renovations in terms of a non-conforming garage, where you already have an existing non-conforming garage, and you're just looking to kind of keep it within the same footprint, I think we have a lot of precedent in that, that supports those types of variances, as we want to encourage people to continue to rebuild and repair structures like that, I do think in addition, as played out in Mr. Mizikar's memo, this is a unique or special circumstance with regards to this only being a fifty-foot lot within a zoning district that is zoned for a seventy-two-foot minimum width lot, I think that has a dramatic impact on your ability to meet the setback requirements, I also think that the requested variance is quite modest in terms of the actual variance from the zoning standard is less than half a foot in each direction, which I think is extremely modest under the circumstances, so for those reasons and for the reasons set forth in Mr. Mizikar's memo, I'm going to vote support of this variance request.
Thank you, Commissioner Walters. Put anybody else else to speak? You covered it quite well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel the same way, too, so, all right, with that in mind, then may I, I'd like to ask for a vote, all those in favor of approving the zoning variance at 947 Lakeside for the detached garage, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, that passes. Okay, that passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, which is just an introduction tonight of the ordinance to amend Chapter 62 of Title VI of the City Code pertaining to the same, pertaining to the same drug-related paraphernalia. And I'm going to ask City Manager.
It's actually going to be City Attorney John Huff.
Sounds good.
Manager was intimidated by this. There are really two ordinance amendments in front of you tonight. Both deal with the same subject, which is removing sections from the City Code that dealt with the regulation of marijuana, to the extent that those regulations have been modified to allow the use of marijuana under certain circumstances. And so the first section is Section 62, which is a very short section, deals with nothing but drug paraphernalia. And there were certain types of drug paraphernalia which used to be illegal, which with the passage of the initiated legislation in 2018, those same items would now be permissible. And so we wanted to remove them from the list of things that if you possessed or used those items, it would be a violation of the city ordinance. And we basically just looked at what's, excuse me, state law provided in that area, and incorporated their definitions and so forth to make sure we matched up exactly with that. And a classic example would be something like a roach clip, that it really used almost exclusively with marijuana, and would now be legal, whereas before, that was on a list of items that you could not possess. The other chapter is Chapter 93, which is the General Miscellaneous Offense Ordinance, which has all sorts of things in it. But with regard to marijuana use or possession, we, we looked at three specific sections. 9.51, which is a definition section, and once again, we had to remove marijuana from the definition of a controlled substance. We had to remove various marijuana-related items from drug paraphernalia, and we had to add some definitions that had not been there before for cultivation and marijuana accessories. Then there's 9.56, which had various prohibitions on the use or possession of marijuana, and generally, those have been removed. The exception would be that there are still certain things under state law, such as operation of a motor vehicle or a watercraft while under the influence. So we retained that. And there is still an age distinction in the new law, where someone under the age of 21 is still not authorized to have or use marijuana, and those provisions were carried over. And then finally, there was a penalty provision, and a lot of these penalties that would have been for the things we just talked about were misdemeanors. There are no misdemeanors left at any level with regard to use or possession of marijuana, but there are distinctions between those who are adults and those who are under the age of 21, as far as the fines that are levied, because of the fact that for some things, adults are obviously capable of doing those things, and those same things cannot be done by someone under the age of 21. But all of them can become civil infractions. And so we needed to make that change, and we did. So this is really two housekeeping amendments to bring our existing ordinances in line with state law on the subject as adopted by the people and implemented by the legislature from the vote in 2018. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you say there was a distinction between an adult being someone, you know, 18 years of age and someone who's 21? There's a, there's a variation in between?
Well, below 21, yes. Someone who's under 21 can neither possess nor use marijuana. So it'd be similar to tobacco or alcohol.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Huff, for the, for the benefit of the minutes, I would like to ask you kind of the same question that I asked you about privately, which is, can you, can you just kind of remind the Commission and remind the public in our minutes, the current status of retail marijuana sales? And there was an article in the Grand Rapids Press this past weekend talking about that, talking about the potential for communities who don't act to regulate that by November 1st, kind of losing the ability to, because there are now applications and some regulations that have been promulgated by the state with regards to that.
Right, so as you may recall, a number of months ago, we looked at that issue, and you adopted a temporary ordinance which prohibited retail marijuana establishments within the business district. There is a sunset provision in that ordinance, since it will be coming up the middle of next year, so sometime between now and then, we'll have to revisit that subject. But for now, that would be considered an opt-out, and so East Grand Rapids has done all they have to do at this point. But you were correct that for those who have not acted, there is certainly at least the possibility that either A, it's too late to act, or B, even if you do act now, obviously somebody could submit an application prior to acting, and they would be grandfathered in.
So we would need to, we would need to have all the regulations and all the discussion and everything worked out and implemented prior to that sunset?
Right, which I believe is the 20th of June or something like that.
June 6.
Yes, that's, yeah. So I'm sure that it's on the to-do list.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Huff? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. But tonight, by the way, you're just introducing this, I have to come up for a second reading in two weeks.
Right. But I do need a motion to introduce, isn't that right? No, I would like a motion to introduce.
Right.
You hate to gamble more than you know to gamble. Let's just be frank. May I have a motion introduced, please?
Motion to introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 62 of Title VI of the City Code pertaining to the same of drug-related paraphernalia.
Support.
Thank you. Okay, then I will, we don't vote, we have introduced, we do not vote.
Yes, we do.
We do. All right, I would like to call a vote, then. All those in favor of the introducing the ordinance this evening for to amend Chapter 62, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. So that carries.
And then same thing for the Chapter 93.
May I please have a motion for Sections 9.51, 9.56, and 9.65 of Chapter 93?
Motion to introduce the ordinance to amend Sections 9.51, 9.56, and 9.65 of Chapter 93, Title IX of the City Code pertaining to definition prohibitions and penalties for alcohol and drug offenses.
Support. Great. Okay, then let's take a vote, please, for this introduction. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. And that motion carries, that vote carries as well. Okay. So that closes out the regular agenda items tonight, and what is left is the consent agenda. So may I please have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Support.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Okay. That is, that's blown in. So, and that concludes the meeting for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Yeah. And I'll. Hold on. All right.